All right, with that, I will call us to order. Welcome to the first of our evening meetings for this year. Glad you could join us. I will go ahead and start with the roll call. And Rod, you're going to do it for us tonight.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the attendance roll call, Commissioner Green.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Vice Chair Brevi.
Here.
Commissioner Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
McLeod.
Hennessy.
LeGrand.
Here.
Lukowski.
Present.
Womack. Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Wooden.
Here.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Here.
And Chairman Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have 18 present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item is our invocation, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly today, we all, in our thoughts and prayers, Commissioner Womack, his family, the loss of his cousin Jason, we certainly pray for that whole extended family and our greater community. I thought today I would read a portion of a prayer from the Reverend Jacob Duchesne. He was the rector of Christ Church of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And this was the prayer given at the opening of the First Continental Congress. The issues and troubles of today are certainly different in some ways, and yet I think this is still relevant. Be thou present, O God of wisdom, direct the councils of this honorable assembly. Enable them to settle things on the best and surest foundation. That the scene of blood may be speedily closed, that order, harmony, and peace may be effectually restored, and truth and justice, religion and piety prevail and flourish amongst the people. Preserve the health of their bodies and vigor of their minds. Shower down on them and the millions they here represent such temporal blessings as thou seest expedient for them in this world, and crown them with everlasting glory in the world to come. All this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, thy son and our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner. Having listened to our meetings online, just remind folks to make sure that you push the buttons before you talk on your microphone, because this is broadcast, and what happens is that there's this mouth going back and forth, and there's no sound. And for some of us, that's good, but generally, you should do that so we can all be heard. All right, we'll move to our next item, item number five, and we have a special order of business today. Dr. Bill Pink is here. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our special order of business.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you. And if Commissioner Womack was here, I'd still would like to go on record officially, not only as myself, as a friend, but also from our college in giving our regards to him and his family and with what is happening there. I want to, first of all, start out by commending and thanking our county administrator, Al Vanderburg, and thanking him for a conversation we had here a few weeks ago, where we were talking about the college and talking about the county. And as we shared, we talked about the fact that it's helpful, and could be helpful, and I hope it is, that you, as Commissioners, would get some level of update on a regular basis on how the college is doing. Because as your community's college, as Kent County's Community College and West Michigan's Community College, I feel it necessary and helpful to you to not only know and have some information about the status of your community college, but also in terms of being able to answering questions and also just invite you to campus sometime to make sure you visit and see what your community college is doing. And so you have some slides in front of you. I'll go through these briefly and then leave some time for any questions you may have after it is over. As an agenda, you see those things that I plan to speak to you about tonight. I'll go through these very rapidly, and you will have, you have this slideshow at your convenience that you can, some of the information that you will see, I will gloss over very quickly because of time's sake, and you can look at at a later time. But from enrollment, inform me about the Grand Rapids Promise Zone. Inform me about where we are with Michigan Reconnect and Futures for Frontliners and explain what that is. Also, just tell you some of the work that we are doing outside of Kent County in terms of Ottawa County with our Lake Shore Campus that just came online this school year. And then a little bit about some of the things we do directly here with the county and as far as Kent County is concerned, and then, as I said, field any questions. So, starting out real quick with enrollment. So, we, as every, in many institutions, community colleges throughout the country, during the days of pandemic last school year, we were very reminiscent of every other, many other community colleges across the country. Community colleges in the United States during last year experienced about an eight to 10% decline in enrollment. GRCC was right in that space. We had about a 9% decrease in enrollment during the pandemic. I am thrilled that this school year, when we started this past fall of this school year, that we came in at a bit over 12,000 students at GRCC, which was about 4.4% up from the previous year. Now, obviously, the previous year was a little lower bar, but that still is, we're grateful that that is still going the right direction in terms of being up as far as our enrollment is concerned. This winter enrollment that we just started four weeks ago, we are still at about 1% up from a year ago in winter enrollment. So, we're thrilled about that. You also need to know that those are for-credit students. Those are students who are going for an associate degree or a certificate or classes that give them college credit. If you were to ask about our non-credit programs that we do over here in town at our Tassel M-Tech, and those programs that are really strong in skilled trades, customized training, workforce training, typically, those numbers can get anywhere from 12,000 to 20,000 additional Because what that says is that that work that we are doing as your community's college truly matters to our companies and our businesses here in West Michigan. But that's a typical year for us in terms of GRCC. Now, that slide that you see there, I'm not expecting you to read every line. I wanted you to have this so that you see what some of the specific high schools that exist in your specific areas, what those high schools look like in terms of our, this semester's enrollment, just so you have that. Again, you'll have this with you that you can look at that more specifically at another time, but I'm hopeful that you can see how many of these high schools, and this isn't holistic of every student enrolled at GRCC, this is just talking about what we have on campus in terms of our high schools here in Kent County. Now, many of you are familiar with the Promise Zone, the Grand Rapids Promise Zone. That effort is into its second year. What the Promise Zone is, is that if a student, if an individual, a student in high school, if they go to school in a high school that is in the Grand Rapids Public Schools catchment zone, so that could be a GRPS school, it could be a private school, it could be a charter school that exists within that catchment zone, and if that individual lives inside that catchment zone, then they are, can be part of the GR Promise Zone, which, for those individuals, gives them last dollar tuition-free community college at GRCC. This was started, as I said, this is the second year of it. In our second year, this semester, we have over 300 students on our campus, and when I say on our campus, that could be virtually or in person, because we have all, both types of classes going on right now. Those students right now are able to access our community college at that price point as well as have funds for them to help in terms of books and those kind, and those type of expenses. We already, in the second year, have some students who are already have graduated because of the Promise Zone. And so that initiative, I am very thrilled to see where that goes as we start climbing out of pandemic days, to see how those numbers continue to grow. But the Grand Rapids Promise Zone is an awesome partnership that we have with the Grand Rapids Promise Zone Authority Board, and that work will continue and continues at a very good clip in terms of the number of students that we're able to service. Many of you might be familiar with the Michigan Reconnect and the Futures for Frontliners programs. The Reconnect, though, that is a state-led program by the state of Michigan, and what that does is that for students who are 25 and older, some are no college and no degree, they are able to access throughout Michigan Community College, especially if they live within a community college district in our terms, in our case, Kent County, they can, those individuals can access GRCC, last dollar tuition paid. I will tell you, as you see on the screen, that right now, we have over 1,000 students on our campus who are coming through the Michigan Reconnect grant. The young lady you see there in our culinary program, she is one of those individuals. And what we have found this year between Reconnect and Futures for Frontliners, by the way, that one, that was another state-funded program that individuals during the time that Michigan, the state of Michigan, back in 2020 was shut down, when we went through the shutdown because of the pandemic, but those frontliners who continued to work, those individuals are eligible for statewide last-dollar community college education. And so what we have on our campus, right, in this semester, over 13, almost 1,400 students who are accessing the community college through those dollars. And so what that means is that we are bringing in, especially with Michigan Reconnect, we are seeing, as you see on the slide, our older population in terms of a non-traditional-age student who's able to come back, access us, and some of those individuals, Commissioners, are people who have never been to college, wanted to go to college, or came and it just didn't work the first time. We are seeing some of those individuals be able to come back, and in some cases, they're getting associate degrees that go to another institution, and in some cases, they're in programs that go to work. And so those are some of the efforts with those initiatives that are indeed giving folks an opportunity to access your community college. Real quick, as I mentioned, what we're doing in Ottawa County, I wanted to just share this with you as well. Very proud that in the fall, we opened our GRCC Lake Shore Campus. It is, if you're familiar with Holland, the West Shore Mall that is there on Highway 31. At the end of that mall was a JCPenney. What we did is, and five years ago, that JCPenney shut down. It, you know, went out of business, and so in the, at the end of that mall, you had this huge big box. But what we did is that we worked with the developer, and now, that big box is now GRCC Lake Shore Campus, $14 million later. And what is so nice about that project is that many of those companies out there in Holland came around that project in helping and funding that project, and now, we have that campus set up there in Holland. And what's nice about that is that that's just, that's, those individuals pay more than double what Kent County residents pay, because you, this is our district. So, an out-of-district student in Ottawa County, they pay more than double. Because of those type of funding streams coming in from there, it gave us good reason to stand up a campus there, because before that, we were in four different locations doing our classes, and none of those belonged to us. So now, we have a facility that we're able to vet out of that location. And then, let me just real quickly show you some of the things that we are doing directly with Kent County, in some cases, with the county itself, and as you see that, not only working as far as our area agency on aging, that's been a 10-year partnership with the county and the college, where we are providing programming for some of our older adults here in the county. And the other one, you can read those, I'm not going to insult your intelligence in reading those to you, but one I do want to point out is, this school year, we stood up a brand-new Veterans Center on our campus, and that Veterans Center, working closely with our Veteran Services here in the county, to say, how is it that we can partner and provide education pathways for those veterans who are coming back from various places? And so you see that, as well as the last thing mentioned there, our partnership with the Road Commission and Public Works, that's important to us as well of what we provide. The last thing I will share with you is the initiative that is on our plate right now. As a college, we are, have a public safety training center initiative that we are working on right now as we speak, and a public safety training center that will in itself house our police academy that we already, that we have and have had for decades, but also will house a fire service program, get into as appropriate EMT, paramedic-type training, and anything else we need around public safety. Because we know that in this regard, for the community college, as I say to many folks, that to me is the work of the community college, that we provide that type of education and training for our community, and it is time for your community college to stand strong in that space and make sure we are providing the workforce that is needed in our public safety spaces here in West Michigan. With that, I went fast. Are there any questions that I can answer for you to see?
All right, great. Thank you, Dr. Pink. That's been very informative, a lot of interesting things going on. Let's see if there's any comments or questions from Commissioners. I see Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. First, Dr. Pink, thank you for being here. I just want to say thank you for all the great work that you do at the college, and what a tremendous asset GRCC is to our community, and I like to brag on the college and how great it is, and we know we're one of the best in the nation, and appreciate your leadership in continuing that legacy. Quick question I had, I'm sad to say I don't know this, but the Grand Rapids Promise Zone, wonderful program, how is that funded? Where's the funding come from for that?
So, there are several Promise Zones across the state, and what the state has done is they only allow several, and when there was an opening that came at the state level, at that time, one of the main, one of the main individuals that was a champion for this was the former superintendent of GRPS, Teresa Weather O'Neal. She got in on that, and the district got in, and so there are treasury dollars that helped pay for that, and it's a formula that is used out of the state as far as treasury is concerned, that as years go on, those dollars can continue to accumulate, so it is paid for in that way as far as, and there was a large portion that, to get that up and running, was donated dollars that came to the table that some of our local folks and philanthropic folks came to the table on. And so that is a great opportunity for some students to get an awesome opportunity at their higher education.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, what a breath of fresh air to have you here tonight. You kept us all awake, so thank you for that. Having went to Grand Rapids Community College, I love it, and I wish, I wish you would have been there when I was there, but mainly just wanted to, again, sing your praises, hope you never leave us. I don't know many community college presidents who get Metallica to do some stuff, so I think that's pretty awesome. Just wondered if you could give us a little update on that, and then where are you guys focused on for skilled trades? We have a huge hole in our economy for that, and just wondering where that focus and how you guys are filling that gap. Thank you.
So, I wish you were at the school right now, too. That's how I feel about that, Commissioner Bolter. So, first of all, our Metallica grant, glad you asked about that, because we are now in the third iteration of that. They continue to come back to us and say, we want to give you more money to train for skilled trades, so we've been selected again by the group to be one of the few community colleges in the country to be recipient of that. And so we are into another round of that funding, and as we said to them, that funding comes in at about, at this point, about $50,000. And what I told them, their foundation, I said, you have to understand, our college, we are a college that when we get federal grants, those dollars are in the millions, when we get federal funding to help our community. I said, yours was 50,000, and the first was 100,000. I said, while that doesn't seem like a lot of money in comparison, what they did for us in terms of the national branding, I said, I can't put a price tag on that. So, that has been an awesome opportunity for us. It helped, it helps in terms of the second question you had, Commissioner, on skilled trades. What we have right now is that many of our skilled trade classes are actually at the M-Tech are filling up, and we are seeing a large number of students who are catching on to the fact of what some of those, what some of those jobs can provide them. And so the work that we have been doing not only continues, but it gives us opportunity to work, as we always have, directly with companies, to make sure we are providing exactly what they need, not what we think they need, what is it that they need. And so that work around skilled trades, whether it be, and if you've seen recently, Commissioners, we just stood up a strong partnership with the Association of Builders and Contractors in a new institute over on, off of 131, that is specifically focused on the construction trades. And so it's that work that is vital to us, because we realize it's vital to our community.
Yeah, and that's why I asked it, because I just wanted to get it out there again, but I really appreciate all your works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Skaggs. Well, it was just us. Everybody had their hand up over there. All right, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Given your enthusiasm tonight, I'm about to take out my phone and enroll myself, so I appreciate the presentation.
Just let me know, I'll take care of it.
How do you, our community here has a very large homeschool student population. How do you connect with those communities?
Actually, I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner. I would say very well, because that is one of the populations that has done really well in coming to some of our skilled trades programs. So, because in something, you know, in how it goes is that you don't know what you don't know, right? So, the more we've been able to educate those individuals on what skilled trades is all about, we have so many of our homeschool students. So, the way we go about it is working with some of the homeschool associations, making sure that those students understand what the opportunities are, even if what they're looking to do is start at the community college, work their way to one of our universities, we help them understand that it's a great way to start, if that's the direction you're going to go. I get tired of hearing people talk about college affordability, because I tell them, we are the answer to college affordability. And so we do great work at this point with our homeschool population.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Pink, thank you. GRCC provided me an excellent education. It allowed me to go to school debt-free, and it allowed me to graduate with my bachelor's degree debt-free because of the affordability. And finally, after 25-plus years after graduating, I thought, you know what? I want that diploma hanging on the wall, so I think it's in the mail, so I'm finally getting my diploma after 25 some years. So, affordability, again, it is the best deal in town. It's the best education in town. I had some of my best professors at Grand Rapids Community College, and I preach GRCC to anybody and everybody I can, because it's an excellent education right here in Grand Rapids. So, again, I really appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Bill. Thanks a lot. This is a great presentation. It was quick and concise. I love it. I, too, was a graduate back in the Stone Age GR, JCPenney.
Commissioner, I tell people, we have more JCPenney grads than CC grads.
Yes, and I actually went to the police academy back in the day, and I'm glad to see that you're investing in this public safety training center. And one question I had, how's recruiting going for the police academy these days? Are you finding it's strong? Is it weak? It's somewhere in the middle?
I would say it's, it comes up, it's kind of up and down, but we typically always have a very strong number of cohorts as far as those cadets are concerned, and our, because our graduations are still full. And so one of the keys to that, Commissioner, is, lies in the partnerships that we have here in West Michigan with our municipalities. And so our advisory committee for our police academy is made up of about every municipality you have in West, in Kent County and in Ottawa County as well. So, but between sheriff's, sheriff's offices, police departments, that committee is made up of, and that's helpful, because what's really nice is when we have graduation of that academy, where those cadets are walking across stage, and for many of them, the people who are pinning them are actually putting a badge on them, because they already have a job.
Yeah, I remember back in the day, it seemed like it was hard, though, to recruit minority officers, cadets, police academy students, and I'm hoping you're, you know, starting to have some success there. It's really important, obviously, and I hope that you guys will do whatever you can to make sure people know this is a very, is a great profession, and we need good people out there in our neighborhoods that maybe can communicate a little bit better with the people they're serving. And besides that, I also want to thank you for the work you're doing with the veterans and trying to get them a good education. I know everybody on this board works real hard in conjunction with the Veterans Administration here locally. One more question regarding your Promise Zone, well, before I get to that, the Lake Shore Campus, does that mean that people over in Lake Shore will get the resident rates if they go to that school? Okay, they don't, okay. I was just wondering.
Not at this point. If, it's up to them. If they voted a millage to, to take on a millage with GRCC, they could do that, but because that is an out-of-district location for us, they pay over about $247 credit out, which still is a good bargain.
It's cheaper than coming to Grand Rapids. And then, and they're eligible for the sports team still, right?
Yes, oh, yes.
The last thing, a little bit more of a touchy subject with me. Back in the day, I think this is back when Dick Hawkins was the president, they had a Pell Grant system back then, and what we found is kids were gaming the system. They were, they were getting their tuition and their books paid for through the Pell Grants, and they would drop out, and they'd get the cash back. And that took place for years, and I could never figure out why it wasn't corrected. As this got my taxpayer hat on right now, that always bothered me. Has there been movement over the years on that, or?
Yes, as a matter of fact, what we do now is, it's really at the federal level that some of those things have been put in, since the Pell Grant is federal dollars, and so a student has to show that they, that they have been attending, it's a class. So, on a regular basis, when our faculty take, are taking role in classes, we tell them, we need you to take role. It's not something that you just lay back, no. We need to take role to make sure those students are in class, because then we have record and documentation as to whether or not they're coming to class or not. It is something that the federal government has helped us with, and we've actually done pretty well with getting at that as a college.
That was just when they quit and then got the cash back. That was a huge red flag. Thanks again for your presentation and good luck, and I am a GRCC graduate, so anything that comes out of me, that's because of these guys, whether you like it or not.
All right, well, with that...
I'll take it. I'll take it, Commissioner. I'll take it.
We don't have time for that, Tom. All right, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Pink, for your vision and your leadership. These great things with colleges don't happen by happenstance, so we really thank you. I had the opportunity to be on campus a couple weeks ago with the student life and in the Lake Shore, and just amazing, and your students are amazing, too. So, they really sing your praises. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Womack, welcome.
Well, thank you. Hello, Dr. Pink.
Well, thank you. Hello Dr. Pink. I'm also a student, former student at GRCC. I took Political Science there. And I remember in admissions, they saying, you should take Political Science. I'm like, you're crazy. I hate politics. They're like, that's why you should take it. And I, I'm glad that I did take Political Science at GRCC. But I, I'm just so proud of what GRCC is doing with the community, especially some of the hiring. There's more people that are from that direct community within that five and 10 mile span that also work in the college. And they've been doing some out, great outreach into the community, a little too many of them for me to give them name, but just want to give them credit too. When it comes to working with the schools or what are the tentacles you're working with as you spread the word to the parents about these brand-new opportunities, when a lot of parents grew up, didn't have the money for college, there were so many roadblocks, so they might've went to the factory or other early workplaces. How's some of that outreach to get to, you know, this generational divide that thinks college is not affordable with these great, great opportunities you're now presenting?
Thank you for that Commissioner. One thing we do is we have some of our admissions counselors and admissions and enrollment folks who are out in the high schools, helping the high schools and helping, when, when a high school says, yes, please come, we, we're not, we don't come, we're not welcome. But when a high school says, yes, we'd love for you to come and share those things, our folks are there. We have had great, great synergy with several of our high schools here in the last two years with actually inviting me to the high school. Matter of fact, I think next week I'll be at Forest Hills Eastern, speaking to their students, asking me to come and, and speak to some of their larger groups of students. Just spent some time speaking to one of the honor societies of one of the high schools. And part of that is encouraging them to go down the higher education pathway, encouraging them on what their pathway and career pathway is, but a big part of that also is saying, by the way, here's what your community college is able to provide you to get down the road on that. And so we have several ways that we get at that aside from just the marketing and communications that we do. And to us, it is important that our parents and our students understand the value of the community college. One thing we see with that Commissioner is that sometimes it takes them a year before they have that realization. Sometimes they have to run off to university and figure out, maybe that's not what my best first move was. They come back to us, we get them ready and then we send them back to that university.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for all of your personal appearances and outreach in the community. I'll be speaking with you on the 22nd as we'll be speakers with Dr. Martin Luther King family and Chavez. And when we were looking for someone to speak to represent Grand Rapids, just hands down, so many kids brought up your name. So many of the young people that volunteers around us were like, Dr. Pink, Dr. Pink, Dr. Pink. And that's probably the first time we had that from a dean of a GRCC university. So that just goes to show your outreach has really helped and set an example in our community. So I thank you.
Great. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Stuck. President Pink, thanks for being here tonight. I really appreciate you taking the time to come out. You represent not only the college very well, you represent the whole community and I want to thank you for that. So my question, with the workforce that we have in this country constantly changing, business demands changing, how we deliver our services, how well are we positioned for that 15, 20 years out when things will be nothing like it is now? And, and what, what can we expect and what can we hope for?
Well, that's a good question Commissioner and one that we get often and I get often in some of the, the places that we are. So the advantage that we have as the community college, the two words that everyone on that campus will say, what two words is he going to talk about? What, if Pink is going to give you two words, what are they? The two words, relevant and responsive. Are we relevant and are we responsive? Those are going to be the keys to the future because if we lose our relevance, and if you lose your relevance, it means you just quit paying attention. Because then you look up one day and you're no longer relevant. And if you're not, usually you're not relevant because you weren't responsive to the needs of the community. And so as we are setting that agenda for the last five years as president, setting a strong agenda of relevance and responsiveness and really trying to drive that home, not only with our college, but with our community around us and how important it is that today's education looks a lot different. Honestly, we look different today than we did two years ago because of what's happened in these last two years. And we have to continue to evolve that way. Because as things continue to change, as our society and our needs continue to change, it doesn't necessarily, the coming of automation, the coming of AI, the coming of robotics, that means, that doesn't mean that all of a sudden a big workforce is going to go away. That means a workforce that is presently there is going to have to shift in their, in their, in their thinking. They're going to have to shift in what they do. They're not going to do as much with their hands as far as moving widgets is concerned. They're going to do more in terms of something like this and programming that widget so it can work. And so what we have to do is continue to evolve our institution because of an evolving community. And I think as a community college, and as this community college, community's college, and the reputation that GRCC has had nationally now over 100 years, I think we are best positioned and poised in this community to be that college that continues to shift to the ever-changing needs. Because as I said earlier, I'm not a believer in being the higher education entity that tells everyone else, that tells industry, here's what you need. I'm a believer in asking them what you need so that we can meet needs and we can come alongside them instead of trying to stay ahead of them where we sometimes get so far ahead that we're going in a direction that they're going, yeah, but that's not what we need. And so that's what's going to be important. And that's, that to me is the fun time. That's the fun stuff.
All right, we have a second round starting. Anyone else who I haven't already asked, if not, Commissioner Burl. Hang on Dr. Pink, we're into our second round.
Thank you Mr. Chair. As we talk affordability, filling out Fast Fund information, I mean, you do need to be a doctor or a scientist for that.
Figure that out, yes.
I, I know a couple of times I just said, ah, forget it and, you know, I didn't fill it out because again, it's very complex. You've got to remember passwords and who remembers all sorts of passwords. But also, how about some of these folks, some of these young students or that, whose parents are not filing their taxes and yet that's information that Fast Fund and the college needs? How can we get some of those students in college where we don't have to rely on their parents or we can say, hey, here's a path and we can help you get there because there's a very good chance that they're just not going to get the help at home. So how can we do that?
What I would ask you as Commissioners to do is to encourage your high schools to act, to have us in to do workshops. Because we have our financial aid folks going out all the time, doing workshops on financial aid, on the FAFSA, on other opportunities for scholarships. And so we are thrilled to do that work because we need to make sure that folks understand. One of the best things about my financial aid director on campus is that when she was in college, she missed, she was eligible for a Pell Grant and had no idea. And so she got passed up on dollars that could have helped her achieve her education. So she is determined that everyone understand, you got to, you have, you must understand what a Pell Grant means, what it means to fill out the FAFSA. So our effort that we have here locally, we are more than happy to do all we can to get out into our high schools, which we do, I'd like to get out even more, to get out into our high schools and have workshops that are not only bringing high school kids into the table to say, here's what that looks like, but their parents as well and helping them understand that. And the other thing about that FAFSA, legislation was passed this last year. I don't know why it's going to take them, well, it shouldn't. No, it's the federal government. I didn't say that. But legislation was passed on a process that will shorten the FAFSA process, which, and simplify. It's a simplification process that has been worked on for years. And fingers crossed, when that one get, happens, we will hopefully have a better system of helping students be able to fill that monster out.
So what do you do in the case of maybe parents that have not filed taxes and how, how do we help those students out? Is there any?
It, it's, it's a, it's an effort to try to, and I will tell you, we've even gone to speaking to some of our faith-based communities. You know, and, and can we get into some of those areas to say, here's what that looks like, to get in with parents? It is, it's a pulling teeth situation Commissioner, when you have some who are, who decide for whatever reason, and there are sundry reasons, we know, that they decide they don't want to do that or why, why do that, why? Fill it out and just see. Because a lot of people will not do it because they say, well, we're, we're not eligible for it. Well, fill that out and just see. So it is just the encouragement we can continue to give in some of our environments that aren't just at the high school. It is at church. It is at different locations and different meetings and different organizations that happen. It is in those situations that we need to encourage people. By the way, you have kids going to college, here's something you need to make sure you're doing and the community college is more than happy to help you with it.
Thank you. Awesome job. Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you Chair and sorry Chair to keep, keep us going, but I, I did want to take a moment and thank the college and thank Dr. Pink for their continued support for North Hook Academy. You know, I can't think of any other, and maybe I'm wrong, but I can't think of any other community college that has a continuing education program for adults with intellectual developmental disabilities. And my sister-in-law has been a lifelong learner there for quite some time now. And I can tell you firsthand, it is a highlight of her life and it's a highlight of many of their lives. So thank you for that continued work. I also wanted to ask, for many who are returning students or could become returning students, a barrier is outstanding debts with that college. Is that something that the Michigan Reconnect Program can assist with or is that something that GRCC is trying to alleviate?
We try to help our students with that. We are, and actually here in the last two years, again, pandemic days gives you a whole lot of realizations on different things. And we have engaged in different efforts to help those students in, because in some cases, the amounts that they still, that they are in debt aren't very large, but are large enough still that they just can't write you a check. So we try to work with our students as much as possible to help them in knowing how to alleviate that, to connect them to services or to connect them to opportunities to help them get at that. And so I'm glad you asked that one Commissioner because that one, that's something that as the college is concerned, we've tried to make sure we do all we can to help address that with students, try to connect them to resources, try to connect them to folks who can and, and efforts that can help with that. But that is one of the difficult things. I will also say to your North Hook Academy comment, for me personally as president at GRCC, that's one of, that's one of our initiatives that's very close to my heart. It's important to me that I spend time with our North Hook Academy students and with all the things that happened in my position and all the things I deal with on a daily basis, I, I can't beat the days that I go to be a part of their annual celebration where those students, when they come up and give you a hug, that's the most sincere hug you can get from someone. Because they are that sincere about how thankful they are that at their age and at their time in life and what they've been dealt, that they have an opportunity to be at a college. And that to us is important. Every other year, we award two to three of those students with an honorary associate degree. They put the, we get them with the big dress and the funny hat on and they come across the stage like everyone else does. And that's special to me. So thank you for that Commissioner.
All right, I think we have exhausted the questions. I, I will thank you again Dr. Pink for joining us this evening. I will tell you, I feel a bit of an underachiever because I didn't go to C.C.
You can come back. It's like.
Well, I fathered two kids that did, so.
That's awesome.
All right, so thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, move to the next item which is public comment. If anyone is here wishes to address the Commission on matters that relate to the agenda, you may do so. Please step to the podium, identify yourself and you have up to three minutes. Good evening.
Thank you very much. I'm Lody Z. Warrenstein and I have the pleasure of being the president of the Advocates for Senior Issues. Later on your agenda, you will see a resolution 2102219 in regard to the senior millage. It's a millage that's been around since 1999, started initially at a quarter mill, then it's gone to half a mill and we are very desirous of continuing the half a mill rate. Very briefly, not to take a lot of your time, that millage provides service for approximately 25,000 lives here in Kent County. We anticipate about $13 million to be raised through the millage. That would be then dispersed through 32 different agencies here in Kent County. Over half of the dollars go to specific.
Can you pull the mic just a little bit toward you?
Excuse me?
Can you pull the mic there?
Be glad. Normally I'm told I'm too loud. Thank you. But over half of the money is allocated for priority services. It provides things like dental, vision, adaptive equipment, home repair, healthy aging, care management and more services. About a third of the people who receive specific assistance are below the poverty level, which I think if many of you know, even at that level, it can become very difficult to maintain yourself. And our goal is to allow people to live through aging as healthy as they can and hopefully in their own homes, which saves money for everybody. About 30% live alone and two-thirds of them are women who tend to have this issue with outliving men. It's a fact and it does affect women especially in a very negative way. We would very much appreciate your support for adding the millage to the ballot here in Kent County. I have several volunteers with me who will be working on a campaign. And in fact, if you are so inclined to help approve the millage question, we would also solicit all of you to help us in spreading the word. It's a millage that does provide a lot of service. It does affect a lot of citizens. It is a benefit for all of Kent County and as you in your own districts can see the benefits of it and can see people who either have questions or have concerns or suggestions, please bring them to our attention. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, we've got people to answer.
Thank you Lody. Anyone else? We can't take questions during public comments. Yes.
Thank you.
I shouldn't say we can't. We don't take questions. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Sanford. I'm also with the Advocates for Senior Issues. And Lody did such a wonderful job of telling you all about the various services that the senior millage will cover. I want you to be very clear, I want to be very clear with you about the fact that every one of those dollars is really important to us. And as a result, the Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan, who is responsible for administrating the millage, is extremely superlative, give another big word there, overseer and fiduciary of that money from the evaluation and planning on through the services. They are monitoring how that money is spent, but not only how it's spent, but they are monitoring the outcomes. And they are encouraging and, and mandating actually that the service providers reach out and, and get more outcomes, positive outcomes in the future. So it's not a stagnant program by any sense of the imagination. So I just want you to know that we as the commission, but also as taxpayers, as Lody said, spread the word. It's a wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you Leslie. Is there anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. There'll be another opportunity for public comment near the end of the meeting. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda and I will call upon Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Support.
Moved. It is supported by Commissioner Jones. Discussion? If not, Rob, would you go ahead and take the roll?
On the consent agenda, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Jones.
Yes.
Bolter. Ponstein. Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Sparks. McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy. LaGrand.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The consent agenda is passed.
Very good. I will remind the Commissioners that there is a packet in front of you that has the close. closed session minutes. If you'll return those to corporate counsel, either now or at some point here before you leave, that would be great. Thank you. All right. I'll move to item number 8A and call upon Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the privilege of moving Resolution 19 of today's date, which is to put this request for the senior millage on the August ballot.
Is there support?
Spark.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Discussion? Commissioner Bulkowski.
I just need to continue to note my abstention since disability advocates is a provider of senior millage services.
It is noted, and I'll recognize that abstention. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I said a lot of words at LHR on this topic. Feel free to watch the YouTube video if you're interested. Tonight, I'll just say that I think the senior millage continues to be a pinnacle example of accountability and transparency for the taxpayer dollars and facilitating the private sector, both nonprofit and for-profit, to implement what are really important services.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Jones.
Just a point. Exhibit A does have a question mark after the older. I'm sure it's just a typo, but that should probably be corrected.
You agree that it is a typo?
Actually, that is the question. Shall a levy be, be, um?
So they leave it?
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
All right. Wish we could solve them all that easily, huh?
Yes.
Anyone else? All right. If not, I'll just add my two cents in following up on Commissioner Coleman. Certainly those of us that have worked on the allocation committee have a deep appreciation for the quality of programming that this allows, the professionalism of the overall organization in the administration of this, and the significance of what these dollars do in our community. So I strongly support this, look forward to this campaign, and to another successful renewal. With that, Rob, would you go ahead and take the roll call?
On Resolution 2102219, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
And Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Great. Thank you. I'll move to item 8D and call on Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move the auspiciously numbered Resolution 22 of 2022 to add one lead sanitarian position for our Health Department's efforts.
I got that.
Exactly. It's not a lead sanitarian, it's a led sanitarian. The challenges of English.
We need, we need a support before you can deliberate. All right. Vice Chair Breevy has supported it. Questions or comments? Discussion? Yeah, okay. Commissioner Antor, I think I saw you first, then we'll go to Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. And we may have discussed this earlier, just I'm drawing a blank on it. A lot of this is investigative work and so on and so forth. Where are we at as far as remediation of the lead? Is that part of this? Or is this just for getting into the homes and trying to figure out which ones are?
You'll hang on. I think our experts are stepping to the podium.
Good evening. The remediation of the homes is not part of this grant. This is to do the inspections, and then we provide referrals to a remediation, and I did say something about that last time, but I failed to mention that Kent County Community Action also has remediation funds along with the city of Grand Rapids, and there are some other partners, too, but they have funds available for remediation.
Now that you're up here again, I do remember this conversation, but I don't know if we actually have the remediation money source for that, so that's good to hear, because that's kind of the biggest piece, getting it out of there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bulkowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just want to thank the Health Department for its continued work on lead and its removal from our community. I think it's, what, the 50-year anniversary of taking it out of paint and gas, and unfortunately, it's extremely slow to get it fully eradicated from our community. So hopefully this will help speed it along so we can finish this work. I know you want to, and it's incumbent on us and some of our funders from afar to help get that done. So again, thank you for your hard work on this.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I do have one follow-up question. Do we have any other grant sources that fund the same kind of service in educating and evaluating the homes?
Yeah, we have, in addition to this funding, we have funding through the city of Grand Rapids for some outreach services as well, and then that's through the CHIP grant, and then we also have the Lead Poisoning Prevention Program through the state of Michigan. So there's two other sources there.
So there's two other sources that fund staffing that does essentially the same thing. So this basically expands our capacity to do that.
Yeah, actually, they don't, they don't fund the sanitarian part, the doing the LIRAs and the, you know, home screenings. They do more of the outreach to the, you know, to those that are, and help us get referrals into that program.
So is this the only program that does that screening component?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, you'll go ahead and take the roll.
On Resolution 2102222, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. I'll now move to item 8E and call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I would like to move Resolution 23 of today's date to add one welcome plan coordinator who will work out of the administrator's office and work to help refugees and immigrants in overcoming barriers.
Support.
Motion was made, supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Comments or questions? Mr. Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So we had quite a conversation about this in the legislative committee, and I think it's a great program. You know, you hear these things, and the first thing people think, well, why are they doing it? Aren't they welcoming? And I think this county and community has had a long history of welcoming people. I know the churches and nonprofits have sponsored people from back when the refugees from the Vietnam War were coming across, so I think we got a long history of it. The only thing I want to say, though, is that, you know, the strong emphasis on just immigrants and people moving here, I think the one thing we can't forget is that, I'm sure there's a lot of residents and citizens that already live here that don't feel so welcome in some of our institutions and some of the ways that we provide services, so it's always something to keep in mind that, you know, it's easy to target people, but we should look at our whole system on how we are welcoming and making our services available. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? If not, I do have, just to follow up on this, as I understand, the funding component of it, the county's role is relatively small.
Yes, $10,000 is the total.
And the rest of it is contributed by the various partners that participate.
Led by Samaritas. There's a variety of private sector and nonprofit partners. Oh, yes. There is a group of nonprofit and public partners that are funding the lion's share of this, and the county is in for $10,000.
And this is for a one-year, so if we get to the next year and that funding drops off by any of these partners, we just reconsider what the level of contribution would be?
Right. At this point, it would be like any other grant-funded position. It would drop off, and one of the early missions will be to get this group back together and start working on funding the next year, and also evaluate as we go through the year how the program's going, but this is something that's being replicated in many other areas, too, including Ottawa County, and we think that it's going to be a strong add.
Any other questions or comments? If not, will you take the roll?
On Resolution 210223, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. I'll now move to item 8E and call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I would like to move Resolution 23 of today's date to add one welcome plan coordinator who will work out of the administrator's office and work to help refugees and immigrants in overcoming barriers.
Support.
Motion was made, supported by Commissioner LeGrand. Comments or questions? Mr. Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So we had quite a conversation about this in the legislative committee, and I think it's a great program. You know, you hear these things, and the first thing people think, well, why are they doing it? Aren't they welcoming? And I think this county and community has had a long history of welcoming people. I know the churches and nonprofits have sponsored people from back when the refugees from the Vietnam War were coming across, so I think we got a long history of it. The only thing I want to say, though, is that, you know, the strong emphasis on just immigrants and people moving here, I think the one thing we can't forget is that, I'm sure there's a lot of residents and citizens that already live here that don't feel so welcome in some of our institutions and some of the ways that we provide services, so it's always something to keep in mind that, you know, it's easy to target people, but we should look at our whole system on how we are welcoming and making our services available. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? If not, I do have, just to follow up on this, as I understand, the funding component of it, the county's role is relatively small.
Yes, $10,000 is the total.
And the rest of it is contributed by the various partners that participate.
Led by Samaritas. There's a variety of private sector and nonprofit partners. Oh, yes. There is a group of nonprofit and public partners that are funding the lion's share of this, and the county is in for $10,000.
And this is for a one-year, so if we get to the next year and that funding drops off by any of these partners, we just reconsider what the level of contribution would be?
Right. At this point, it would be like any other grant-funded position. It would drop off, and one of the early missions will be to get this group back together and start working on funding the next year, and also evaluate as we go through the year how the program's going, but this is something that's being replicated in many other areas, too, including Ottawa County, and we think that it's going to be a strong add.
Any other questions or comments? If not, will you take the roll?
On Resolution 210223, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Great. Thank you for that. That concludes our resolutions. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If anyone is here wishes to address the commission on a matter that is relevant to the county's general jurisdiction, you may do so. Please step up to the podium. If you'll identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Chair Miller, Chair of Kent Conservation District, and I just want to thank you for supporting the resolution, and on behalf, I'm saying, thank you on behalf of my fellow directors and our staff at Kent Conservation. Really appreciate the unanimous support, and we look forward to coming back in the near future to provide our annual report, as we have done in the past, and also we look forward to coming back in the future and letting you know how you've invested these dollars in Kent Conservation and the kinds of outcomes that have come from that investment. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Anyone else?
Can I just talk from here?
I'm sorry. We broadcast, so.
I really have a loud voice.
Well, I know, but.
I'll keep this very brief. I just wanted to thank you as well for the proposal for the senior millage. We are just thrilled again, and again, if any of you want to get involved in promoting the millage, please see us.
Thank you, Leslie. All right. Anyone else wish to address the commission? All right. If not, we'll move to our next item, which is the administrator's report. Good to hear. Any other reports? If not, we'll move to the next item, which is miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? Commissioner Bukowski.
I have two shameless plugs for this evening. The first is Disability Awareness Day, which is a collaborative effort of disability advocates and a number of other disability organizations, is Friday, March 11th, the same exact time as our strategic planning process. So I don't know if that was a conspiracy to keep me away from strategic planning or not, but I'm looking into it and.
Is it working?
That's right. But more importantly, pass that on to your constituents. I'll get additional information. The cost is $25, but all you have to do is check a box, and the scholarship is yours. This year, it's at the Crock Center on South Division. And the second shameless plug is, next month is Laugh Fest. It's not too early to buy your tickets. That's where my wife works, Gilda's Club. So again, our annual Laugh Fest, it'll be slightly smaller this year, not the whole, like, 11 days that it had been pre-COVID. So check those two out, and I'll send information along.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So Al, I want to thank you for getting the data out on the tax increment financing district, kind of give a broader picture of everything to it. You know, in my years of service, I'm aware of how complicated our tax system really is. So we've had a lot of new people, and I think it was not just good for me to see it again, but for some of those to see it for the first time on how money's collected, and sometimes we don't get it all. Secondly, I'll go with the shameless plug of Mr. Bukowski too. And when I get up in the morning, my email feed is full of emails regarding everything. And I know you all, just like me, get a lot of requests for donations and charitable donations, and sometimes you can do it, and certainly you can't do it all the time. So after the past year, it wasn't too good of a year for me, but I did take one of those challenges and donated to a raffle that I've done in the past, never thinking that I'm going to win it. I'm not a big advocate of sports gambling, and I think you'll see a quote coming out in a couple weeks about what I said, and it's basically, I said, I could have taken that same $100, gone to the casino, and about 10 minutes, the money would be gone. The casino would have enriched itself at my cost. However, this past November, I took that $100 and made a donation to Faith Hospice for their annual raffle that raises sizable amount of money for their Breedman Center, which is in part a fundraiser that an NFL ref that lives in this town with his, well, his two brothers are NFL refs too, Carl Pegganelli, in honor of his wife who had passed from cancer and the services that she received at Faith Hospice. It's one of these things that in our community that make it different and make it better, because I've never heard anyone say anything negative about the work they do, but they talk a lot about the compassion that they give. So with my luck of not winning things this year, Carl Pegganelli, when he drew that ticket out and just said, you know, I know this guy, and he went to school in Wyoming, and I went to in Granville, both of our parents were school administrators, and I got to know him over the years. So yes, my name was drawn for a Super Bowl raffle, so in less than 11 hours, I'll be on my way to LA. I, me and my wife are rooting for number nine. You guys know I have strong, how I feel about the state of Louisiana and everything down there. So Burl, I've got one of his LSU jerseys, and my wife's got a Stafford, and I'll probably wear my Stafford one too, so. But I just wanted to give a big shout-out. Different charities do different things to raise money, but they're always raising money. And I just want to thank the staff and all those that made this trip possible, because I know it would be something that I would just say, let's go to the Super Bowl this year. So thank you.
Well, congratulations, Commissioner. All right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, when I heard the news of the death of this young man, Jason, immediate heartache, but I know nothing like the heartache. Commissioner Womack and his extended family are feeling right now. I just wanted to express my deep condolences, my continued prayers, and also my thanks for his voice for stopping violence in our community. You have an important voice, Commissioner, and I appreciate you using it even through a personal tragedy. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Anyone else? If not, just a couple of things. Commissioner, all of us join in expressing our condolences to you and your family.
Thank you, Chair.
A couple of items on timing. Just remember, legislative work session, February 24. It'll be immediately after our Board of Commissioners meeting on the 24th. Executive Committee, if you're inclined to get up at 7:30, Executive Committee bill will be at 7:30 that day before the Board of Commissioners meeting. And if it's not on your calendar yet, the state of the county event is tentatively set for the April 27, I want to say.
28.
28, okay. 27. 27. Thank you, Commissioner Bukowski, for.
Having a day run today?
I know you have another, you have another event on that.
I have three, so. It's Fair Housing Day, in case you want to know.
The conspiracy continues. All right. Make sure those are on your calendar. So that's all I have. With that, I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, February 24, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Supported and all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I do have one follow-up question. Do we have any other grant sources that fund the same kind of service in educating and evaluating the homes?
Yeah, we have, in addition to this funding, we have funding through the city of Grand Rapids for some outreach services as well, and then that's through the CHIP grant. And then we also have the Lead Poisoning Prevention Program through the state of Michigan. So there's two other sources there.
So there's two other sources that fund staffing that does essentially the same